...two thousand fifteen at seven PM and the city council chambers will come to order. We welcome Reverend David Stewart of the First Methodist Church for the invocation. Will you rise, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, we are so thankful that we have the opportunity and the privilege to serve and to live in this community. Give you thanks for the blessings that you have given us and the prosperity that continues to this day. Lord, we give thanks for those who have gone before and we pray for your spirit to lead us into the future. We pray for your spirit to be in the meeting this evening, to inspire those who have gathered here to have insight and to have wisdom in making their decisions, that we may create a community of justice and mercy and an opportunity for all persons to prosper and to grow and for us to have a great place to be able to raise our family and to make a difference. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Stewart. We appreciate our ministers pastors and our community that come to give our invocation. Roll call, please, Ms. Kirby.
Councilwoman Pearson, Councilman DeGaris.
Here.
Councilman Crocker.
Here.
Councilman Tinsley.
Here.
Councilwoman Fox.
Here.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Abshir.
Here.
Would you have a call?
Thank you. Disclosure of interest: any member of the city council may disclose any possible conflict of interest dealing with either any item on the printed agenda or with any matter discussed at a previous meeting. Seeing none, citizens input: each person in the audience may take this opportunity to address the city council on any matter which is not on the printed agenda. Come to the podium, please, and give your name and your address. You can pull that down just a little bit.
I am Tammy Summers. I live at three oh five County Road four seven six one here in Popper Bluff, Missouri.
Okay.
Mayor and members of the council, I want to thank you for allowing me to address you tonight regarding an issue that is escalating in the street department. A member of management.
Ma'am.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
We can't discuss personnel issues in open session.
Right.
I mean, if you'd like to give.
May I submit?
Yes, you can sure do that. We can discuss that in closed session, but we can't discuss it in open session. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Robertson?
Hi, my name is Don Robertson. I don't live in the city at the present time, but I do live off Townset Line Road. I have a small request, and that is the stop sign at the getting off of Westwood Boulevard, Northwestwood, onto Barron Road, to me, needs to be removed for the simple reason, if three cars stop there, like I had to the other day, then I'm out on the highway. And I know the stop sign originally was because of Barron Road went through, all the way through, but since Larry Hillis has put the new road through there, they have a stop sign for that traffic to stop. And my opinion is that the traffic would flow a lot better if that stop sign right there, within probably fifty feet of the highway, could be removed. And, like I said, that's just my opinion, but it's just something that I had stuck out on the highway the other day, and I don't know that there's been any accidents there. I know that it was a lot busier when Katy Lane was under construction. So it was just something that I noticed, and I think it would be a good idea for somebody to look at it.
Thank you very much. That'd be something we can.
Which stop sign?
Pardon?
When you come off sixty-seven and turn to Barron Road, your stop sign here. And there's one here.
That makes sense.
Something we can look into, Mr. Robertson. Thank you.
Now, we've actually talked about maybe putting a stop sign before Barron gets into that intersection, so.
Yeah, I've.
Because it is causing some traffic problems.
I would have observed, yeah, they sit in the New Wave parking lot, especially late in the afternoon, four or five, there's a lot of traffic, turn, and we're backed up on the highway there on the shoulder.
Yes, we'll certainly look at it.
In your packet, you, oh, is there other, any other citizens' input? Okay, city council in the packet, you've received the minutes for our approval of September eighth, two thousand fifteen.
Make a motion, we approve amendments as presented?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the amendments as presented. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Now, Ms. Kirby, have the city clerks report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Each councilperson received a copy of the consolidated statement of funds on deposit in various banks as of September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Those amounts are, in the Commerce Bank, two million eight hundred and thirty-five thousand fifty-two dollars and thirty-one cents, and People's Community State Bank, five hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-nine cents, and First Midwest Bank, eleven million four hundred and sixty-five thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and thirteen cents, and First Community Bank, forty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents, and Sterling Bank, six million four hundred and thirteen thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars and sixty-four cents, and in Southern Missouri Bank, three hundred and thirty-four thousand three hundred and sixty-three dollars and six cents. This gives us a grand total of all funds in all banks of twenty-one million six hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and two dollars and twenty-six cents. Total funds on deposit for the account of City Hall is eleven million nine hundred and twenty thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Coliseum is forty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-four cents. Total funds on deposit for the account of the Park Department is one million two hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-one cents, and total funds on deposit for the account of Municipal Utilities Department is eight million four hundred and thirty-one thousand twenty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. Each councilperson also received a copy of reports from city departments for the month of September. Those reports are a list of bills paid, a report from the municipal court, a payroll report by departments, a report from the Planning Department, a report from the Police Department, Animal Control and Code Enforcement Departments, a report from the Street Department, a report from the Tree Advisory Board, and the Police and Fire Pension. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Make a motion, we accept the clerk's report.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the city clerk's report. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving to workshop items for discussion. Item A: the city council will review a recommendation from the Municipal Utilities Advisory Board regarding a proposed ordinance converting the Utilities Advisory Board to an autonomous board. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, Madam Mayor. They discussed that it's a board meeting this afternoon, and they've decided they're going to make more changes before they bring something back to the council, so this item really needs to be tabled tonight.
Okay.
Make a motion, we table the item.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to table item A. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item B: the city council will review proposed rate increases from the Black River Coliseum Aquatic and Fitness Center. Mr. Godwin and Ms. Heather Tugel.
Hello. Short and sweet. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. Basically, what we did was we looked at our revenue and our expenditures for the following year to come, and with some increases in minimum wage and some other things, we're looking at possibly increasing our rates a little bit, making a few changes to some of our pool party counts, and making some other arrangements in regards to our weight room age, putting a minimum age on that in regards to how young children can come in and utilize our facility in the weight room. So just some small, basic changes that you guys will see on your proposal, along with, we haven't done any type of rate increase or changes since two thousand and ten. I just wanted to make sure that we noted that. It's been five years since we've done anything to the Coliseum. And if you guys have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Questions of the, from the council?
This is just for the aquatics only?
This is just pool and fitness only.
Okay.
There's nothing on the arena side. This is what my assistant manager, Kyler Sal, and I have been working since August. We've sat down with Bobby, and we finalized it this past month, and we just wanted to present it to you guys, so hopefully that we can get it passed and be able to announce to the members and start getting everybody aware of some changes. We'd like to put this, implement this January one, if at all possible.
Questions from the audience?
Rates only two dollars a month, pretty well, isn't it, all the way down the board?
Yes, that's what we're looking at, is just increasing them to two dollars a month. We are hoping that we could do some grandfather work in regards to our automatic draft, and that's where we automatically pull the funds from people's checking accounts and credit cards. So we're hoping that we can draw in some people last minute that's not already on that account and get them as long-term members. That's our ultimate goal in regards to that. We're hoping to get some grandfathered in, but overall, yes, we're just looking at a two-dollar increase.
I think it's pretty good for, since two thousand and ten, everything else has gone up more than that.
Yeah, and.
Appreciate all your work. Keep that down.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Make a motion, move item B to voting session.
November second.
November second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded to move item B to the November second meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Heather. Item C: the city council will discuss information received from the Spyglass Group LLC on an audit performed by the city's telephone, cable, and internet services. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, you all had gave us the go-ahead a couple of months ago to have them look at our past telecommunications bills. They came back with a proposal, but we really need to hold off on this after we talk to them today, because we're making a lot of changes on telephones anyway, and with our computer upgrade, really, this isn't the time to do this. Probably in a couple of months, we'll come back to you with this, so I guess this also needs tabled.
Can I make a motion, we table this item?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to table item C. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item D: the city council will discuss accepting a portion of Warrior Lane as a dedicated city street.
Yes, city planner Dennis Avery's going to comment on this.
Mr. Avery.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Warrior Lane is the road that comes off sixty-seven at Church of God on sixty-seven South. You have Church of God, you have the Family Counseling Center, which used to be Southern Missouri Christian School, Westwood Hills Nursing Center is a major player down there, and there are a few other buildings. We've actually got some buildings under construction down there now. But Westwood Hills is changing hands, and they approached the city earlier this year because the road actually is private and it's on Westwood Hills Center, Westwood Nursing Homes property, and they would like for it to be a public road, which makes sense since we have other entities using the road down there. Approximately three-hundred-foot stretch of this road, forty feet wide, is what we're proposing to accept, and that would take it to the southwest corner of the nursing home property. I don't know if any of you have been down in that area recently, but there is an elderly housing complex going in that'll have a forty-eight unit capability very soon, and, but that's what we're proposing tonight on this. Any questions?
All the way back to the church?
No, it doesn't. The church, the back church, Grace.
Christian Fellowship.
Christian Fellowship is actually still in the county. They are the only property back there that's in the county. They chose not to come in back at the time when the rest of the properties were coming in, but it does serve that church. But it stops before you get to the church property. Stops about where the CMO Treatment Center building is.
What's the condition of that road?
Fair, to maybe a little bit better than fair. We actually took photographs of the section in question that we were talking about accepting, knowing that this might be an issue with construction going on across the street. We've talked to the developer over there. They know that if they damage this road, that they're liable to repair it, so we do have visual evidence of the condition of the road before they started that project. It's not the best street in town, but it's probably not the worst street in town either.
That was concerned, that was the road construction up here.
There are a couple of locations. It is concrete roadway in this portion of the road. There is some slight damage to it, but it's well-traveled and doesn't seem to be an issue as far as, you know.
Where's the city limits line?
On this road, on this road specifically? Sir?
Does it go to the city limits?
Uh, yes.
Pretty close.
Yes, it would. The CMO Treatment Center is a little bit farther south than what this road extension is, but once you get down there, they have easement agreements for access by CMO Treatment Center and by the church. The big issue at the time was that Westwood Hills Nursing Homes was changing hands, you know, ownership, and that road was on them, and people traveling that road were on their property, and they didn't really want the liability of that, so they approached the city, and since we have open ground down there, and some of which is being developed now, we thought it made sense to accept it as a public street on down to the area where the elderly housing complex is going in.
So is the city limits in about where the church parking lot starts? Is that right around there? No?
Oh, on the, on the east side of the road, yes. On the west side, it goes all the way on down. And actually, the house, the subdivision south of it is in the city. That would be Fairway Estates.
Right.
Palm Tree Drive, which you can't access from this same road, but it's directly south of that, and that's also in the city. So the only thing in the vicinity of this that's not in is the Grace Christian Fellowship.
We're not leaving any street that's inside the city limits, it's not.
No, no. Any other questions?
Your recommendation is to.
Recommendation is to accept. And as we noted, we have, we know the condition of the roadway now, and we will monitor it, and we'll be watching them under the construction phase to make sure they're not dragging mud out in the road and the whole thing. We always watch that pretty close.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion, move it to November second?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to move item D to November second meeting. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item E: the city council will discuss the resignation of Councilwoman Angela Pearson. October sixteen, two thousand fifteen, to the Honorable Mayor and City Council, it is upon my heart at this time that I resign from my elected position as a member of the City Council for the First Ward. Upon my resignation, I would like to reflect upon my tenure as a member of the City Council and former mayor to further increase the success of the First Ward and Poplar Bluff. I encourage the populace to elect a candidate for the upcoming election to represent them fully as a person and not just as a voter, to see Ward One continue to prosper. Please keep in mind a candidate that will represent you from the heart, for that is the only way we can progress, whether it be someone new or someone with a little spirit to keep Poplar Bluff on track, to see the downtown flourish, and to see Poplar Bluff continue to grow. Respectfully, Angela Pearson, Councilmember, First Ward. Angela wanted us to give some of the things that she has been concerned with in her ward. One is the ditches. All ditches need to be completely cleaned out in case we have heavy rains. The drainage system, there's large drainage ditch on Pike Creek that she would like to see taken care of. Sidewalks, many sidewalks in South Poplar Bluff need to be replaced or fixed. Code enforcement, most citizens that she has spoken with in South Poplar Bluff were very concerned about the neglect of properties in their neighborhoods. The citizens complained of trash in yards, rubble from structures that have been torn down or have caught on fire in the past. Utility rates and other concerns. Crime, all efforts to keep Ward One safe from crime are invited. Levees, we need to start seeking ways to get repairs for the levees funded in the event of another devastating flood, and paving needs, to have some gravel roads in South Poplar Bluff that are busy enough to be paved in the near future. She mentioned South Broadway, South Eleventh, small section of Cravens going into Town and Country, and end section of Delano Street and Pike.
Do we need to move this to the voting session tonight, or do we need to put it on November?
Verbal accept.
Yes.
Make a motion, we accept, though.
Yeah, make a motion, we accept, the heavy hearts.
Tonight.
Yeah, we're just in a verbal.
Second.
Motion has been seconded to move agenda item E to the voting session this evening. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item F: the council will discuss authorizing the mayor to execute an emergency solutions grant for the United Gospel Rescue Mission. Mr. Winters.
Matt Winters with Ozark foothills Regional Planning Commission, addresses thirty-nineteen Fair Street. We're working with Reverend Kirk and the United Gospel Rescue Mission on a emergency solutions grant to the Missouri Housing Development Corporation. They're applying for fifty thousand dollars that'll go towards helping with some operating expenses, utilities, food, and supplies. The application just requires a letter of support. Actually, it's a form they provide with the application, asking for the mayor's signature, certifying that she's, that she and the council are aware of the application and that you're in support of it. This is an application they've submitted and gotten funding for the last several years. They have to provide, it's a one-to-one match, so the fifty thousand dollars they'll get in grants, they have to show that they're matching it with fifty thousand dollars of their own funding, that they generate through fundraisers or donations and things like that, so. Any questions about the application?
When does that have to be turned in?
It's due Friday in Kansas City.
Miss Friday?
Yes, sir. And I'd like to say thank you to Ms. Kirby for adding me to the agenda tonight at like notice.
Questions or comments?
This is just a letter of support, too, so you can approve it verbally.
We just need a motion to, make a motion, we approve it.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that we approve this, allow the mayor to sign the letter. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Moving to action required items. Item AA, bill number seventy-eight fifty-six. The city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Poplar Bluff to enter into a contract between the city and the housing authority of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri for community policing services.
Move for first reading?
Second.
Seven-eight fifty-six.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading of bill number seventy-eight fifty-six. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Smith.
In ordinance of, in ordinance of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city to enter into a contract with the housing authority of the city of Poplar Bluff to provide the housing authority with community policing services.
Move for second reading, bill number seven-eight five-six.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of bill number seventy-eight fifty-six. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In ordinance of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorizing the mayor of the city to enter into a contract with the housing authority of the city of Poplar Bluff to provide the housing authority with community policing services.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of bill number seventy-eight fifty-six. Roll call, Ms. Chris Kirby.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshir.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-eight fifty-six been adopted. Item BB, bill number seventy-eight fifty-seven. The city of Poplar Bluff will take action on an ordinance rezoning property from RS-two General Residential to O-one Office Professional to operate as a medical and professional office as a conforming use for Northwest Medical Center property.
Move for first reading?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading of bill number seventy-eight fifty-seven. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, rezoning property from RS-two General Residential to O-one Office to operate a medical and office, professional office as a conforming use.
Move for second reading?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of bill number seventy-eight fifty-seven. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, rezoning property from RS-two General Residential to O-one Office Professional to operate a medical and professional office as a conforming use.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of bill number seventy-eight fifty-seven. Roll call, please.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshir.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-eight fifty-seven has been adopted. Item CC, bill number seventy-eight fifty-eight. The city council will take action on an ordinance rezoning property from RS-three Central Area Residential to M-two General Industrial for future industrial development for Poplar Bluff Industries for property lying south and east of South Eleventh Street and west of Cravens Ditch, seven point eighteen acres.
Move for first reading?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading of bill number seventy-eight fifty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, rezoning property located southeast of South Eleventh Street and west of Cravens Ditch Road from RS-three Central Area Residential to M-two General Industrial for future industrial development.
Move for second reading?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of bill number seventy-eight fifty-eight. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, rezoning property located southeast of South Eleventh Street and west of Cravens Ditch from RS-three Central Area Residential to M-two General Industrial for future industrial development.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of bill number seventy-eight fifty-eight. Roll call, please.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshir.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you. Bill number seventy-eight fifty-eight has been adopted. DD, bill number seventy-eight fifty-nine. The city council will take action on an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to operate a daycare center for up to sixty-nine children in a C-two General Commercial District for Hattie's Little Scholars Academy located at eighteen seventy-one Speedway Drive.
Move for first reading?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading of bill number seventy-eight fifty-nine. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In ordinance of the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to operate a daycare center in a C-two General Commercial District located eighteen seventy-one Speedway Drive, Poplar Bluff.
Move for second reading?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of bill number seventy-eight fifty-nine. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Motion carried.
In order to the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to operate a daycare center in a C2 General Commercial District located at 1871 Speedway Drive, Poplar Bluff. Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt bill number 7859. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshir.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 7859 has been adopted. Item EE, bill number 7860. "The city council will take action on an ordinance amending the base cost for the purchase power fuel adjustment for municipal utilities."
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading of bill number 7860. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, amending the electric rates and charges to add a base cost for a purchase power fuel adjustment for the Municipal Utilities Department of the city of Poplar Bluff.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of bill number 7860. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, amending the electric rates and charges to add a base cost for a purchase power fuel adjustment for the Municipal Utilities Department of the city of Poplar Bluff. Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of bill number 7860. Roll call, please.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Councilman Crocker.
Yes.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
And Mayor Abshir.
Yes.
We have six yes votes.
Thank you, bill number 7860 has been adopted. Item FF, bill number 7861. "The city council will take action on an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a service and license agreement contract with Civics Plus for developing the city's website."
Move for first reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for first reading of bill number 7861. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorize the mayor to execute a service and license agreement with Civics Plus for development of the city of Poplar Bluff's website.
Move for second reading.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for second reading of bill number 7861. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
In order to the city of Poplar Bluff, Missouri, authorize the mayor to execute a service and license agreement with Civics Plus for the development of the city of Poplar Bluff's website. Move for adoption.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded for adoption of bill number 7861. Roll call, please.
Councilman Crocker.
No.
Councilman Tinsley.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman DeGaris.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Abshir.
Yes.
We have five yes votes and one no.
Thank you, bill number 7861 has been adopted. Item GG, "The city council of the city of Poplar Bluff will meet in a closed meeting in which they will discuss such matters which are exempted under the Open Meetings Law, Section 610.021.1.2.3.9.11.12.13 and 14, RSMO."
I make a motion, go into closed session after the city manager's report.
Second.
Did you second?
Yes, I seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded to go into closed session after the city manager's report. Mr. Massingham.
Yes, I just wanted to let the council know, I've got all budgets in from all the departments for next year's budget. I hope to have them all completed and finalized by the end of next week sometime, so... What I'm really shooting for is we'll vote on it hopefully the first meeting in December and not wait till the last meeting in December. But I'll let you preview it for several weeks before, after I get it done. Also, I brought up last week, or last meeting, somebody asked about licensing lawn services. Looked at several communities. Sykeson actually does license their lawn mowing services, I think it's a twenty-five-dollar-a-year fee. Ralla and Hannibal I looked at, they had no specific... It looked like if they do, it's lumped into other businesses. Springfield licenses tree surgeons, it didn't say anything about lawn service. Columbia does lawn service and tree trimming, and theirs are based on a gross amount of sales they do, so... We'll probably come to you in the near future with something on that. Just wanted to let you know that I haven't looked into it.
Did they require insurance?
Yes, they did. They actually required workers' comp insurance, so... Still working on some revisions for code enforcement regulations. Hopefully sometime in November, I'll be able to bring something back to you on that. And tomorrow is the health fair for the employees, starts at eight o'clock and ends at two, so hopefully we'll have a good turnout for that. That's all I have.
Anything else to come before the council?
I believe I'd like to comment, I had an incident, I had a citizen that called and complained about code enforcement. I called the code enforcement officers, and Chief Whitley actually got involved. This was a repeat, ongoing thing, and they really went over and, I believe, they got the gentleman's attention. And we really got some action out of the code enforcement. I was really, really pleased with them, within the same day, actually, within the hour, they were acting on it. It was, they're really trying.
They are.
Thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded that we adjourn. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This meeting is adjourned. Take a few minutes...